If I can get Commissioner Johnson and/or Red, just recognize yourself, let us know via your voice that you're in attendance.
Joe Johnson, Commissioner.
Good evening, sir. And Commissioner Red?
Cat Red, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I think we might have had a small glitch on the audio, so if we could, for the record, make that motion one more time, I apologize for the need to do that.
That's fine, all right. We had a motion to amend from Mr. Heaven, and is second by Commissioner Rain, correct? And I'll call again, all in favor?
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
Commissioner Red?
You got an aye or a no?
There was an aye.
Okay, thank you, all right.
She was speaking during the aye part, so I appreciate that.
All right, sounds good. Okay, so we have our agenda, that would be item F. So, moving along through the public hearing, first one, item A, which was meeting minutes for the Youngsville Development Ordinance, section 2 dot 14, single-family residential grade, definition, section 7 dot 1 dash 1A4, construction plan, section 7 dot 7 dash 1 G1E, site construction plan required, section 9 dot 2 dash 2A, attached house lot type standards, and specifications, building placement, parking, and vehicle access, section 9 dot 2 dash 3A, attached house building type, permitted height, uses, encroachment, and resiliency, uh, resiliency standards, sorry, section 9 dot 3 dash 2A, attached house lot type standards and specifications, building placement, parking, and vehicle access, section 9 dot 3 dash 3A, attached house building type, permitted height, uses, encroachment, and resiliency standards, and section 9 dot 4 dash 2A, multi-family lot type standards, building placement, parking, and vehicle access. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open that here into the public as of 7:04, and turn it over to Ms. Clinker for staff report.
So, I was prepared last fall, invited you're good developers to, for concern that just a little bit align you, that require crawl spaces, thereby also prohibited flat foundations, they provided evidence that demonstrated that constructing both attached and attached housing on a crawl space was cost-restricted versus doing the same on a flat foundation, and also saying there were recent changes to building codes requiring required separation wall between town components, that is being a necessary to carry those same walls through the crawl space to the back to the ground, which also increases cost. We had several work sessions with the planning board, I included those minutes in their packet, and that helped us arrive at the next amendment proposed this evening. The packet also included the specification given by the developers to the planning board, the proposed amendments will remove that crawl space requirement, and allow developers to see whether to be struck at home on a flat or on a crawl space foundation, and will also provide standards by which builders, by when masterizing individual subdivision, as well as apparent standards. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of these amendments, as they're meeting last week, and they are also going to begin with two goals, I would be confident in that.
All right, thank you for that. Having heard that, I'll go ahead and open up for comments from the public, and I believe we've got one person, in-person, who wanted to speak to this, Mr. Gordon Paulson.
I don't need to add anything now, in case there's a question came up that I can lead your hand.
Okay.
I'm not allowed to speak.
Fair enough, fair enough, okay. So, that was all I had for the in-person piece of that, we didn't have anyone, Madam Clerk that signed up, made email or anything like that.
Those are the only things that I have.
Okay, so is there anyone here that would like to make any comments in regards to this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:06, and we'll move along into item B, which is development agreement, Cedar Creek Apartments, I'll go ahead and open that hearing to the public as of 7:06, and turn it over to Ms. Clinker for staff report.
So, this is the development agreement for a parcel that was in, into the town in a time zone earlier this year, they are proposing a 1.4 unit apartment complex at the corner of Pick and Cedar Creek Road, and it is RMBV, water allocation for the first 41 units. The site is in MU2 district, and the plan that does comply with the district standard, the tight D buffer, it requires between this development and then adjacent parcels, and they will be required to install right-in must turn lanes at Cedar Creek Road at those. The future development in the corner of the site will likely be commercial development, but will be constructed at a far later date. The complex will be constructed in phases over a 10-year time period, but the option to extend its development becomes economically unfeasible. The planning board also voted unanimously, unanimously, they're being urged to recommend approval of this development agreement.
All right, and anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up to comments from the public, I know we have one person that signed up for this one, Mr. Darren Knowles, and I believe they may have called in.
Uh, yes, I'm present.
Okay, floor is yours, sir.
All right, first of all, thank you and good evening. The only question I have was the potential problem regarding traffic with the Cedar Creek Apartment proposed development, how would a town of Youngsville handle that potential problem in terms of the traffic for Cedar Creek Road? And that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you. The, obviously, the corridor is pretty, both right now, to say the least, there is a lot of construction from the county side that is not related to the town, we certainly see the impacts of that. I see Mr. Hurd is here, I don't know if you had any comments that you would like to make in regards to the, to the question that was asked, or just any statements in general, because what are your views? If, if you want to bow, stand, whatever.
I mean, we're gonna follow DFC guidelines and recommendations for the complex, for full build-out, like these turn lanes, and we're gonna be in conversation with Mike Knowles, wind flow, and sort of some traffic studies, there's things transpiring there, but our goal ultimately, we're gonna, we're gonna follow DFC guidelines, recommendations for what we intend on, if we're done that intersection. Not a survey in the year, so I really don't know to what extent they're gonna require, I know that if they want to turn the light, we will hopefully, we'll see through, but other than that, just gonna follow guidelines and recommendations in order to be able to pursue this plan.
Sounds good, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. DFC has mentioned in the past year, it's having had zero, it's the corridor analysis for the intersection at Cedar Creek.
Okay. All right, thank you for the comments, I'm assuming, is there any additional comments from the public in regards to this item? All right, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and close that hearing as of 7:10, and move into item C, development agreement, Gilchrist Farm Road, boat, and recreational vehicle storage, we're gonna open that hearing to the public as of 7:10, and turn it over to Ms. Clinker for staff report.
So, Mr. Jordan is proposing construction of, and are resorting to development on property at the corner of Gilchrist Farm Road, the South Fox Street, the site is zoned MU2 when the white area was adopted, so that facility to be constructed at a later date. No road roads for Mr. Eden, other than a widening of the site, there will be a decorative fence and a periphery buffer between this lot and the apartment.
I just muted him, yes, sir.
The planning board package is of a preliminary nature, and more detail will be included on the construction plans when he is ready to submit those. The planning board also voting unanimously to recommend approval of this development agreement.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Clinker. Go ahead and open that up to comments from the public, and I don't see anything written here on my piece of paper, so I'm assuming there were no additional emails, Madam Clerk, anyone on the phone or in the room here that would like to speak on this matter.
And if you're on the phone, unless we recognize you and we can't hear you, you might have been muted, you can use the command star six on your phone to unmute yourself if you'd like to be recognized during any of the public time period.
All right, and hearing no additional comments from the public, so I'm gonna close the meeting as of 7:12, and we're gonna move into item B, request to rezone, properly located, on the line of how we know 6, ten number 1843-92-76, from scene 1 to MU2. I'll go ahead and open that hearing to the public as of 7:12, and turn it over to Ms. Clinker once again for staff report.
So, this lot is the large lot that is just behind the food line shopping center, the applicant is looking to rezone his property, it's a size of a lot, wanted to sell it better to, and make sure it residential and commercial development, not letting street commercial. He's intending to sell his property into civilized, he will likely construct retail space on the property from a budding M96, with multi-family units, or to reoccupy lots and office space in the street, which would not be permitted under this range of zoning. He property is valued by MU2 zoning to the south, and the proposed zoning thus providing the transition to these, to C1, where he can door, and the MU2 zone property, a five-foot-wide buffer, tight D buffer would be required between this parcel and adjacent parcel dummy commercial, well, thirty-five foot wide, thirty-five foot wide, tight A buffer would be required between this parcel and adjacent parcels that were zoned industrial. The planning board also recommended approval of this, if they're due for meeting, and it is, both the future and the current, and the confidence of the planning board.
Okay, thank you for that, and I'll go ahead and open up to comments from the public, again, I don't have anyone on the list here that I want to speak, if we have any additional emails coming in, okay, and do we have anyone in the building who wants to speak to this, or you don't recall? All right, hearing none, go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:14, and we'll move along into citizens' comments. I know we do have one in-person that wanted to comment on this, and I will recognize Mr. Glenn Ellington, and I believe the reasoning is for the rezoning of 686 Fleming Road.
Yes, I'm hey, Ellington, we live at 621 Fleming Road, our property's doing 686 Fleming Road. First, I want to say I'm thankful that we have a public meeting tonight, that everybody who's interested in this, it's pretty frustrating since December to have a online meeting, we cannot be over here and stuff, so we're thankful that y'all out, coming to build and talk some things. The landowner has stated that he did his homework before starting this project, but I want to ask him, if you ride down Fleming Road outside, hang on, how many other subdivisions do you think like what he's proposing in our neighborhood? He also said that this project would increase the land value, and according to the petition that we have, with I think 117 names on it, it doesn't look like our neighborhood is interested in increasing our values. We are interested mostly in keeping what we have, large lots, mini farm avenues there, that's why we purchased here, and that's what, that's what the neighborhood was about when we lived, so we like to keep it that way. And so, the rezoning, you know, I don't work for the town, it looks like it'd be minimal value to the town, just nine additional homes, but it would, it would impact the neighbors quite bad. With these covenants that do not allow us to subdivide our property, allowing that subdivision is inconsistent with the existing use of the land, we would hope that everyone would be treated equally and held to the same standards, which is what we read in the town planning that makes for a special provision. Thank you, and I think there may be some other people here that may, may have something to say, I have a lot of comments.
Um, thank, okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comments there, um, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
All right, car work up scene 385 Fleming Road. We went from about 83 residents to 117 million opposition to this rezoning. When I spoke to people living in the meeting, they were quite incensed, realized the lengthy, the length of time, and the charrettes, and the public input, when we rezoned this entire area at MU2, less than a year ago, to now only go against that zoning and return it to something different. And it was almost like, what was the point of going through all of that? Inputs, public charrettes. The area out there is designed for small farms and mini homes, so the pastoral aspect of it as it exists now is incompatible with high-density development. If you think just the development impacts the traffic, light pollution, lots of tree cover, is that enough? We have a tipping point with the runoff, closing down the road because the pipe there. I do not want to see additional runoffs impacting that road and that corridor, because it could close it again, cutting us off from the town. And that is bad for our local businesses, it's bad for our farms, and it really should be looked at whenever we have any type of development. That's all I have to say, and very long, and well, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional citizens' comments?
Yeah, I'm Rick Lewis, I live at 621 Fleming Road, across the street from the Post Development, and I'm just, I'm really scared by what's going on over there, and I'm hoping that you all can help us to maintain the type of lots and houses that we already got in that area, instead of dropping a whole new development within our mini farm development. So, that's what I ask for, something that's, consistent, stay consistent with the surrounding problems. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
Chelton, 617 Fleming Road, six-story, six-story residence. I'm probably the newest resident in the area, I moved in a little over a year ago, one of the things that was most appealing to me when I bought the house, was that it was agricultural, and has also been a lot, that, all twenty-four lots were bigger, that was very appealing to me, and so, I would say that truly characterized the neighborhood for me, and then, less than a year later, to find out they were gonna put ten houses across the street with a delivery shop. So, I was, that was the, that was the scar of it, the lot size in there should, should be, helps follow the way we are, through an avenue for it.
All right, and what, last thing we gave was house?
H-O-L-E, E.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you for your comments there, um, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
Yes, I do. I'm Jamie Brager, and I really did something for you. I thought my town, I live in Wake County for a long time, and I'm so long in Wake County, and I didn't come to show up for college in the Rose, and I purchased my house in 1998, so I've been there a long time, and what sold me was the fact that we had wildlife, we had birds, we had deer, we had all sorts of wildlife, we had privacy, there was lots of woods and trees, and it's, it's quite, and that's safe neighborhood. I lived there by myself, so it's, these ain't a field neighborhood, and I'll just have to say, I, I feel like that maybe the builders putting another ten houses on a smaller tract of land, and kind of right in the center of all of the people that have two to five to 10 acres, is just really out of context, I mean, you know, that's not what we originally thought in. We support the town, the council, the police, we even support the commercial businesses here, and we'd like the community to do that, but, you know, I just, I really wish you play about this, you'll think about this, and put your stuff in the aisle, too, I mean, I purchased to age that place, I plan to live there until I die, and the thing that people said, she's got the privacy, and I think that we would lose a lot of the values, and the town and council, which is used, lose beautiful, beautiful woods, a lot of good people that were probably just brought in and found in the middle, and then put you down. Uh, yeah. That's all I've got to say, I, I really do not mind him subdividing the land, if I'm to be two acres from you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
Yeah, Glenn Ellington, pick the whole thing up. They got an action request that they're taking with this, to, to July 8th, can we forward that to all of us, if we have to? And it's the holiday week, and anybody that's paying these meetings, I would suggest to anybody that has a vacation to come up here.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your comments, and Mr. Ellington. Um, okay, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. My name's Ray Cowes, we're at 455 Hilton Lane in Youngsville, I wouldn't speak in favor of, of action type in the night, especially for project launch, earlier, and I just wanted to let you all know, he's a very compliant client, I've known him for several years, they started his new business, so I don't know what he calls us, it's growing really well, the plans I've seen, building locations, I think would be a real asset for the town, and they bring a lot of activity here, I could answer building, I want to get to talk to my client there, and their full support issues and that, so I think he's a really good business owner, I got to tell him, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cowes. All right, any additional citizens' comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move along into item 5, which is the consent agenda, the action request is here to approve consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Grant, other question, have we, have we been there, discussing all the things?
I would, I would say we can get to it, when we get to it, I think that one is item...
All right, it's on the table?
Yeah, I know, I tried it, I tried it, yeah, I certainly, yeah, no worries. It's okay, I tried to relax, we used to yell at kids, so it works out pretty good, so, all right, we've got a first and a second, now it's discussion time, do we have discussions prior to moving to the... All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Red, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, that is unanimous, we'll move along into item 6, which is old business, item A here's the Northeast Area Study Update Presentation, and who's, oh, okay.
So, we'll recognize Mr. Brandon Watson with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Brandon, did you want to share your screen, or do you want me to pull up the slide for you, it's up to you.
Um, sure, I can share my screen, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. And... Let's see... All right, are you all able to see my screen okay?
We can, yes, sir.
Perfect. All right, thank you all for having me today, I really appreciate it, I'm Brandon Watson with the Capital Area NPO, and I am here to give a final update for the Northeast Area Study Update. We came to you in, back in January, to, to give you another update, we actually started this study back in Jan, February of 2020, and we started with existing conditions, and had our first public engagement touchpoint last summer. Our second phase was we, we analyzed where we met with stakeholder and technical team members on some land use and scenario planning, as well as some hotspot concept designs last summer, and then our last phase is finishing up now, where we held our second round of public engagement, and we're taking comments on the draft recommendations and priorities, so we finished up that last round. Um, next, regarding the last engagement period, which was the virtual open house in late February and early March of this year, the open house interactive maps and survey were available for 24/7, for about three and a half weeks, and it's all still viewable through the project website. So, this slide here shows a summary of visitors to the open house tent, we had more than 700 unique visitors who accessed the virtual open house, 300 surveys were completed in this round alone, and we received over 50 additional comments and 150 points added to our interactive maps, and the bottom chart shows the project website with almost 1,500 unique visitors as well. So, each of the questions we asked in the survey were focused on prioritization and implementation, we framed them as ranking or rating from least important to most important. Combining and averaging all the answers gave us a starting point for prioritizing projects, and then we folded in timeframe, horizon years, as you can see here on the right, from the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, our regional plan, which has funding considerations, and then our third factor was future year deficiency analysis, so what are the needs now, and in the long term, what are our needs as well. There's a few resources I want to highlight here, one is a separate document of a summary of the public outreach engagement, our next one is our policy guidebook, which builds on the effort of the 2014 Northeast Area Study, we reviewed adopted policies and plans for what's changed and what's still recommended to be updated for each community, and then we also took into consideration most recent best practices, and then the last is the project workbook, which includes all the recommendations and priorities as we move forward. Real quick, the table of contents here is shown for the workbook, and I'm gonna go quickly through each chapter here, the, the first chapter just holds the context for the project, including that this is an update, and the 11 different communities involved with the project. The second chapter is planning framework, and is really all about the process, it includes our outreach tools, the guiding technical and stakeholder advisory groups, and who else involved. Our next section is a snapshot, which is basically existing conditions of the area, we were looking at what's there now, and what does the data project is gonna happen moving forward. We did a scenario planning chapter, which is one of the main things we talked to you guys about in January, when we talked to you, and that focused on land... And that focused on land use and growth strategy. We played a, kind of played a what-if game about development and redevelopment in your community through a variety of exercises with the stakeholder and technical teams. And then chapter five here included some hotspot concept designs, which was five unique corridors selected through a data-driven process. We looked at what could be improved in the near and midterm. And the most important part is that there are other corridors like these, so we can kind of apply these concepts to other locations. In these hotspot concept designs, we look to address locations that have a unique challenge. It included elements such as bicycle pedestrian integration, complete streets, development, redevelopment concerns, safety or other issues. And they represented up to twenty percent preliminary engineering design, as you can see here. We had three rounds of meetings for each location with local staff and NC DOT Division and Engineering Staff. And then this one is just adding new access to US One at Stadium Drive in Wake Forest, considering the closure of access with NC DOT's US One Freeway Project. Our next one here is in Wendell on Rollsville Road, providing full movement access at I-87, where there's currently only one inbound ramp and one outbound ramp. This one's in Zebulon along Proctor Road and we provided some more crossing opportunities, consolidated some driveways and improved safety with a roundabout on one end and an intersection improvement project to the east, you can see there. This one, I wanted to spend a little bit more time here. This is in Youngsville along NC ninety-six between Long Mill and Park Avenue, which is a one-point-three-mile corridor with the future interchange on US One. This one popped up on our ranked list of potential projects for a hotspot, mainly due to some safety issues and future year volume over the capacity of the road. The group really looked at trying to improve the movements in and through the corridor while improving safety and integrating the frontage and baggage roads concepts that would allow you to continue flowing north and south along US One while still being able to access areas that will be closed to direct access in the future. This concept is showing improving the corridor with four lanes and medians in some places, turn lanes and others, and then incorporating local design plans and site plans, as you can see here, as well as some opportunities for creating intersections for future developments. And a roundabout on the southern end at US One Alternate to help get vehicles through connecting into the future northern bypass route. This was a really good concept that could also be applied to other corridors in need of improvements that also have other future improvements and land use aspects proposed along the corridor. And our last one here is US sixty-four business and we were looking at safer pedestrian crossings and building parallel routes, as you can see to the south there, to connect properties to help build a local street network. Our next chapter was roadway and freight. We ended up with almost three hundred and sixty roadway projects altogether, split out by different improvement types. That included widenings, new locations, access management, grade separation, and then some intersection realignments to improve safety. Some key projects in Youngsville to look out for here included the Youngsville Southern Bypass Truck Route, coordinating with Franklin County and the town of Wake Forest on those southern connections. Also the widening of NC ninety-six to provide that east-west connection, which is the hotspot I just mentioned. Adding a center turn lane on Holden Road from US One to College Street and then Cedar Creek Road widening. All recommendations were then placed into three buckets of priority, so that's kind of what we used for our survey in this last round of engagement, near, mid, and long term. And you can see here on the map, near-term projects are in green and those basically would have the greatest impact here in the short term. Moving on to transit, our first mile and last mile solutions, one of the low-hanging fruit to consider, especially in areas that don't currently have fixed routes. Micro-mobility is a popular idea right now as well, such as that Northeast Wake County micro-transit study that's moving forward. Increasing frequency and weakened service improvements are pretty cost-effective near-term solutions. And then some midterm solutions include some additional extension, for example, extending bus service to Franklinton in Youngsville. Also, support for passenger rail in the northern corridor through the S-line is still progressing and a key transit recommendation for the study as well. In the long term, the study proposes bus rapid transit extensions at Knightdale and Wake Forest and then east trans, a rail line through Knightdale, Wendell and Zebulon was a big interest in eastern Wake County as well. And then last but not least, we have the walking and biking maps, which was majorly about connectivity is what it came down to with that. We really wanted to demonstrate flexibility, so we broke the projects into free, into four categories. Our complete street urban here addresses the need to retrofit where we can, so we're serving all modes. And then our next category is street redesign on-road, which is looking at improvements within the existing curb. And then our third one, we received a lot of feedback on about how much it would improve safety, is street redesign off-road, which includes improvements outside of the curb but still inside of the right-of-way, so think about like a side path next to the road, for example. And then finally, our greenways, you know, could follow along, utility easements or outside of the road right-of-way to create an off-road network. And then some key projects in Youngsville include NC Bike Route Two was a priority we talked about and US One Alternate Street Redesign Off-Road, as well as the Richland Creek Greenway. And then throughout the project, we heard over and over that people want more walkable and bikeable communities and I think that had a lot to do with COVID, people are getting outside more, so it was really on everyone's mind through this process. Regional connectivity is important, but people also want to be able to walk down the street to school or the store or a transit stop. So with the recommendations, we generated new projects from open house feedback and we identified locations where even a small improvement can make a big difference to a neighborhood. The study ended up with almost three hundred walking and biking recommendations as well. And so we prioritized them while still trying to maintain that flexibility. Bicycle pedestrian accommodations were also explored and included where applicable for all the roadway project recommendations. And then this is our last slide here. I kind of wanted to go full circle from the first time we met with you all in our first public engagement period, showing this graphic on the right down at the bottom. I just wanted to reiterate how all local land use and transportation plans, as well as area studies like this one, they all flow up into informing the prioritization of projects based on funding for Campo's Regionwide Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is actually in the update process right now. The NICE Update Workbook, including an appendix with a list of all the recommendations, our public engagement summary, and the policy guidebook are all up for review on our website right now, which is shown here with the link. And there will be a public comment period that will start in July, with the study to be taken to our TCC and Executive Board for consideration of endorsement in August. We're also conducting these board briefings, we're coming around to all the municipalities in the areas for your endorsement of the NICE Update Study to be considered in future planning efforts, including the twenty fifty MTP. My contact information is here, so feel free to reach out even after this meeting and I really appreciate all the help for everyone helping us with public engagement and getting the word out. And yeah, if you guys have any questions, be glad to take them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Watson, and I'll turn it over to the commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Watson?
I have one. Commissioner Brandon, yeah, Brandon, if I remember the, if you get out the near, mid and home terms timeframe, can you tell us all part of what that would be for that?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question and one that we've been getting a lot. So with these studies, we have our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is our actual plan. This is a study informing that plan, so our plan, MTP, comes in decades, so we've got our, with the twenty fifty MTP we're working on now, we'll have a twenty thirty, twenty forty, and twenty fifty timeframes for projects. So for our studies, we kind of split it out into near, mid, and long. Unfortunately, we don't really attach like decades to it because this is a regional study, so we could say this is a near-term recommendation in this area, but when you put it into the MTP and it goes in the model and it competes, it may not be a near-term, it may not be a first decade project, but more of a second or third decade project. So our near-term recommendations were really just tried to include those ones that make the biggest impact and would probably fit into one of the first decades or either projects that we know that, you know, the town is gonna pay for or are coming down the pipe or already in the works.
All right, any additional questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Watson? All right, well, hearing none, the action requested here is the endorsement of the Northeast Area Study Update to assist with future planning or including the thirty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So do I hear a motion to move forward with endorsement?
I'm moving to endorse.
Got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, and that is unanimous. Thank you, that. Next item on the agenda is to continue discussion on the question zone, six eighty-six when we vote from AG to SFR dash one. You know, we heard from several of our citizens tonight about potential impacts. I have potential agreement with Commissioner Johnson, as we stated in the last meeting, this is probably something we shouldn't rush to do and obviously with some of the comments, I believe from Mr. Ellington asking for an August twelfth meeting, I would certainly be in favor of that, but obviously I don't have a vote, so I just throw it to you guys and see how you want to do it. If you want to continue it to July meeting, we can do that, and we continue to August twelfth meeting, we can do that as well.
I'm actually gonna be on vacation, so I don't think that that meeting is gonna be on the calendar.
I mean, that's reasonable.
What's I can do?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Alternatively, the board can reschedule its eight meeting to the fifteenth if it prefers that. And it's all within the realm of possibility.
I might be on vacation too, though, man. Come on.
Well, that's, so that's when Joe would be quoting and stuff in my absence, so.
Sorry about the water.
No, 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 you're totally fine, totally fine. Okay, so action requested here is to table discussion until the August twelfth meeting. All right, got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, and that is unanimous.
One quick question, I did receive an explanation petition, the last bit of the paperwork today, so that paperwork has been completed, it's just a matter of me giving it more to you and that would probably be on the July agenda, with the public here in August and effective date of all the work.
Does that at least give us some time to review it in the next meeting or something like that? Okay, sounds good, all right. Item C, y'all really want me to read all this again? I didn't read it. Obviously, the action requested here is to approve amendment as proposed, so I entertain a motion to approve. All right, got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving along into new business, item A, development agreement, Cedar Creek Apartments. The action request here is to approve development agreement as proposed. Do I hear a motion to approve the development agreement as proposed? I'm gonna give that to Mr. Evans, he got some, he got some just by some, I was gonna say a hair, but I can't do that. You're welcome, man, okay. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, that was, it was a little bit of overlap, it sounded dense, okay, all right. Motion carries, item B, is development agreement, Hillcrest Farm Road Vote and Recreational Vehicle Stores. The action request here is to approve development agreement as proposed. All right, got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, motion carries. Item C is request to rezone property located on DC Hall ninety-six, one hundred eighteen four three, dash number two, dash thirty-six seven six, from C-one to MU-two. The action, this request here is to approve rezoning request as proposed. We got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote?
I have one question for you, Karen. You mentioned that different portions of the property are gonna be used for different names, can you go over those in a minute?
Yeah, so the rest of the ninety-six will be retail and then you'll have office space and then in the back would be the...
So the residence would be in the southwest most...
Yes.
Okay. Any additional discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? All right.
Like Mr., uh, yeah, I, Commissioner Johnson, aye.
We got some. Commissioner Redd?
Nah, it's happening, it's supposed to have, I'm saying, to the assets of, actually, and I, okay, it's right on.
All right, so the last one, no, it's not the last one, it's the last one, I'm mistaken. Item D, consider renewal agreement with hard dog law for legal services. And the action request here is to approve agreement as drafted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm gonna approve.
All right, we got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
I apologize, but I lost connection, can you please tell me what we're voting on before I say aye or nay?
This is the agreement with, the agreement to continue with hard dog law.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Redd, aye.
I figured something happened, 'cause she was on, listening to one of them. All right, so motion carries, item D, consider terminating municipal materials management agreement with public services into ongoing material breach. Action request here is to direct town administrator to terminate the agreement.
So they're consistently missing about five percent of our customers. There was an event back in March where they missed fifteen percent of our customers. We continue to have service-related issues and the town's paying in public to pick up every town customer and so we accept them. Yes, sir. So, I mean, most of it is just misses and not providing the service that they're obligated to provide.
My second question is if the town thinks it's over, how is it gonna handle, can we handle recycling?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question, was this the, with the timeframe for...
So I'll be speaking in greater detail during my report, but... So I'll be speaking in greater detail during my report, but, um, the intention is to, uh, de-deliver, uh, roll out parts, new town branded roll out parts mid-July for the last service for Republic to be performed on July 30th, which is the Friday, their usual service day, and for the town's first service to be provided on Monday, August 9th, and Tuesday, August 10th. But again, I'll speak in greater detail about that.
A little bit.
What will be the pricing structure?
There will be no price change at this time.
So pricing, anything to that?
Yes, sir.
I've moved to direct town administrator to terminate the agreement. All right, I think I'm gonna give that one to Commissioner Wiggins, right? He got some by the way, okay, all right, so we got a first and a second, uh, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, and that motion carries there. Uh, and then the last one, which was the added piece to the agenda, is, um, item F, and the topic is approved resolution supporting updating the town's bike and pedestrian master plan. The, uh, action requested is to approve the resolution as drafted. All right, we got a first and a second, is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Commissioner Redd, aye.
Commissioner Johnson, aye.
All right, and that motion carries there as well, okay? Um, all right, item A, unfortunate business, um, I feel like I've already talked enough, I don't really have anything to add, so, um, I'll turn it over to Mr. Poderro and let you have some fun with, uh, some, some good old updates.
Thank you, sir. I do have, uh, handful, so I'll try and be quick. First, update on the Main Street project, and unfortunately today we had our bid meeting and we received one bid. Um, according to statute, we need to receive three on initial advertising in order to open those bids and proceed with the project, so we will re-advertise the project, uh, should delay the process by about a month, we intend to re-advertise for a three-week period. Um, we'll probably publish the advertising in about a week, which is where I'm getting to, about a month. Um, and fortunately, on the second time around, even if we only get one bid the second time around, we can open that bid and we can issue a notice to proceed if we choose to accept the bid, we can also reject it, of course, at that time. So, given that, uh, process, I anticipate this board to have a bid in front of it to award or approve at its September 9th meeting, given that we'll probably open bid sometime, uh, maybe the week or two after your August meeting, and so we'll present that to you in September. Any questions on the Main Street project?
It's a little disappointing, we only got one bid, but...
It is, it is, um, you know, there's a lot of development demand in this, uh, in this climate that we're in, and so, uh, you know, we think that it's just a, a product of that environment, you know, there's a lot of paperwork and other things that you need to do in order to, uh, be a construction contractor on a federally funded street project, and I think a lot of, uh, contractors would rather just build homes and make money that way, so I think that's the reason for, uh, the, the lack of interest, but no doubt, uh, we'll at least get one bid second time around, but we'll also double our efforts to advertise in as many places as possible to solicit firms that, um, maybe were unaware or for some reason didn't submit a bid, uh, this time around, you know, we'll, for example, be reaching out to every contractor that, we actually had four or five firms attend the pre-bid meeting, um, and we only got one bid, so one of the things we're gonna do is recapture those contractors and ask them, is there a reason why you didn't bid, is there, you know, maybe the project timeline or something of that nature that we can do, um, to help make the project, uh, more attractive the second time around, so we'll do all those things. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, actually, ma'am, with, uh, the, the citizen's comment, portion has already passed, I think.
Um, I do wanna update that, I've provided some updates, um, on some, there's some utility trenching work around town that has been festering for some time, that is a bit substandard, especially in this general vicinity, um, essentially in, you know, waterline break, things of that nature, and the utilities crews from Franklin County come in and, and do their repair work, there's some, been settling with the pavements and things of that nature that people have complained to the town about, um, so the town has worked for Franklin County to, um, retain a contract at the county's expense to repair those, uh, street, uh, issues, and so their, the work on that will be beginning next week, so we hope that people in this immediate vicinity, but they're small, so, there's also some other areas, uh, for example, on Bonterra Drive, on the way out of town, um, that, uh, they've been waiting some time to see some progress there, so we hope that breaking of streets, shovels in the ground, asphalt going in the ground will make them, uh, pleased that we're finally getting around to, uh, doing this project. Um, our public works facility is on, uh, target to be completed, uh, mid-July, we intend to occupy that building in approximately one month, so I encourage you to take a look at the building, um, the, uh, progress is going very well, they've got siding, um, and a couple of doors on the building already, uh, so it looks great, and I also wanted to, uh, pass on a gift, uh, or a, a safety, a safety, uh, safety equipment for the mayor, uh, to use when he, uh, goes to visit the building, the contractor, uh, gave us, gave us, so, uh, he can try that on and, and make sure that when he goes to visit the building, he'll, uh, he won't have anything fall on top of his, uh, nice shiny head.
This is very nice.
Um, so regarding the trap, uh, the trash topic, uh, I'm gonna circulate these, if you could take one and pass them around to the commissioners that are present, um, and I'll, I'll pull up a map if you'll bear with me just one moment, um, on the screen up here. So while this is opening, again, um, so the, the town has, um, worked with a contractor to arrange for the delivering of roll-out parts to all of our customers in, uh, the mid-July timeframe, and I'm gonna increase this zoom here so we can, uh, see it a bit better. So the card that you're looking at is, uh, just what I'm pulling up on the screen here, but what we're going to do as far as services concerned is we are going to be dividing the town in half, essentially, with, uh, College Street as the delineating or the line of delineation, and so those customers that you'll see in, uh, the blue shaded area here are gonna be serviced on Mondays, and the customers that are in the red shaded areas are gonna be serviced on Tuesdays. So, um, when the town carts are delivered, uh, in mid-July, there's gonna be a thicker place on every cart that will inform the resident of his or her day of service, so it'll say your service day is Monday, or your service day is Tuesday, uh, to try to eliminate any confusion, and those carts will essentially just sit, you know, on, on their property, they can, you know, put them in the backyard, wherever you normally put your, uh, roll-out cart, until the first service on August 9th, when Republic performs its last service on July 30th, they should collect all carts, however, we anticipate that they may take a period of a couple weeks to end up collecting all those carts, so we'll certainly have patience with them while they do that. Any questions at this time about the trash service?
So, right now, we did all bulky items in the same day, that we keep the same work to work, but it's not much to do in different companies, so...
Yes, sir, so that's a great question, so as, as, as the flyer indicates, the bulky item service day will now become the resident's trash service day, so instead of the entire town being serviced for bulky item collection on Mondays, the blue shaded area or western side of the town will be serviced for roll carts and bulky items on Mondays, and then the red shaded area or the eastern portion will be serviced for roll-out carts and bulky items on Tuesdays. Less days for you to remember, right?
Yes, it's taken two years for us to...
Well, I think we heard about that, and so we decided to change it on you, so you'll have to start from square one. Any other questions about the town's assumption of trash service?
So is this recycled?
Yes, sir, yes, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna convert the account as they, as they currently exist, all the accounts will be converted to town service, so if you have two trash carts and one recycling cart, you're gonna get two trash carts and one recycling cart, so just have the town's logo on him, and, uh, those will be the waste streams that they will go down. Yeah, I don't have any other comments on that, any other questions that I can answer?
One thing that I would like to see is better communication coming through, and there's a problem with public...
I assure you, so, and that's one of the main frustrating points, is with their customer service, so it's, it's not only that they're missing, but it's when there is a miss that it doesn't get rectified in the one business day that the contract requires, and it's because, you know, we get, it reported to us, we notify them, they don't respond, you know, in a timely fashion, and so this is essentially gonna put the town in direct communication with the customer and, and cut out the middleman, so it will improve the level of service. The town is also gonna provide an electronic means, as is on the flyer, there's a website there, so you can just type that in your phone, and you can hit, hey, I, my trash is missed, and that's gonna go directly to the public works crew, they're gonna have a tablet in their truck, and they're gonna be able to notice that it was missed, so there might not even be any intervention necessary on the customer service team's behalf, but either way, we're gonna streamline the processes to improve our customer service.
Will you see any more trash being laid on the side?
I assure you, you will not, absolutely not. And, and, and if, and if it becomes an issue, then I, I can at least take disciplinary action against the town employee that's not providing the correct level of service, which is not something that I can do for Republic.
Say train down the road, yeah.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on the trash service?
Is it something we can go ahead and share now with our neighbors, or...
Uh, yes, sir, you can share that information now, um, I will be posting a copy of that on the town's website, so if you want, you can just let them know, um, I would say by noon tomorrow, give myself a couple hours, but it'll only take me, you know, a minute or two, but we'll put it on the website, and then just so you're aware, what we're gonna do is we're gonna mail those cards to all of our current customers, if, uh, after that mailing date, even between the first day of service, we're gonna keep track of our new customers, and we're either gonna mail it to them, if they prefer to mail it, or if they provide an email, we're gonna provide a digital copy of it via email, and we will also be using a robo-call service to call all of our customers and inform them of the information that's on that card, so we'll be essentially doing everything that we can other than walking up to every home and hanging a door hanger to, uh, inform the customers. Any other questions or comments on the trash? Uh, just a reminder to the board that the, uh, town administrator recruitment schedule is that we'll have a meeting on, uh, Thursday, June 17th, which is next Thursday, a week from today, from seven to eight thirty PM. Uh, we'll have another meeting, not the next week after that, but the following week, on June 29th, which is a Tuesday at seven, uh, from seven to eight thirty. Um, those meetings will be electronic meetings, so you feel welcome to either attend via web conference, or I'll be attending from Town Hall in the conference room, so if your preference is to attend in person, then you can join the web conference, uh, in person at Town Hall, and then, uh, from twelve to five PM on Friday, July 16th, will be the final meeting, uh, in that process. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that, uh, any questions for Mr. Poderro? All right, uh, start around the room, I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Redd. All right, Commissioner Heaven?
Just one thing, I can end this, this year, when we plan, when I, when I step it down from college, just, it doesn't have way, I, my service department was on the nail over to the church.
Understood.
So just one, I mean, no hard feelings, I love him, and...
Yeah.
It was the last stuff, it's kind of, less, just falls in the air.
Understood, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wiggins?
Uh, a couple things. Uh, observation this morning, that the intersection, but I'm just, uh, uh, we have a town quarry running a weed area, very carefully around illegally placing plants, trying to, to mow the plants.
Thank you for letting me know, sir.
Uh, almost every Sunday, I make a big tour around town, clearly the town cemetery, and I notice that, uh, grass and weeds are fifteen inches tall, almost every Sunday. We may have fast growing weeds and grass, but, uh, looks like they put some attention to that because just a year or two ago, we have a pretty good old town, like...
And I, if, if I may, sir, um, and I shared some, some information with Commissioner Redd earlier this morning, because we had, uh, some similar, uh, discussions, the town currently mows every town property, uh, every other week. Um, this is probably the busiest time of year for grass growing, and it grows as fast as around this time of year, and then, uh, unfortunately, it rains, it grows abnormally fast, um, and the rain is, is worse, where, for, you know, one of the things that we talked about, um, Commissioner Redd and I, is that last week we had four days in a row of very heavy rain, and so that compounds the issue for mowing for us, because you can't run a mower on saturated ground for safety reasons, but also because you don't wanna ruin the grass itself, and so, um, I'm not making excuses, uh, at, at, at all, um, and certainly, um, if we continue to have issues that are not weather-related, um, then the town will certainly evaluate whether we need to add a part-time person, uh, to the schedule around this time of year, the busiest grass season time of year, to make sure that that mowing gets done, and I'll take that comment with consideration in planning, I appreciate it very much.
All right, uh, thank you for those comments, uh, Commissioner John? All right, no comments, uh, Commissioner Redd?
I have nothing, thank you.
I think she says she had nothing, she said she had nothing, and she thanked you.
Thank you, Commissioner Redd. Um, finance, anything additional to your report? All right, sounds good. Uh, fire department, uh, submitted their stuff, it was in the packet, um, and Mr. Rich couldn't be good enough, this is his birthday, so happy birthday, Mr. T. Rich, and I'll turn it over to, Mr. Parks and Redd, do you have any additional comments from your...
All right, and we'll move along into planning and zoning, Mr. Peter?
Almost have anything on that, I'm just thinking. But that's, no other to do.
All right, sounds good. Steve Wood?
I have nothing, sir.
All right, thank you so much, uh, anything from public works?
No, sir, not other than everything that's been already shared.
They're gonna be super busy coming up.
They will, they will.
All right.
And they, they will be getting one more employee effective July 1st, that was in the approved budget, and that's to help with additional grass service, but also with the trash service.
All right, sounds good, Mr. Katie Walker?
I don't have any public business to discuss, but I do want to thank you all for choosing to go with us for the head of year, um, I'm just, I'm very excited to be part of everything that I'm still having.
Glad to have you, thank you for those, John. And Madam Clark?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, uh, now would be the time for the quasi-traditional hearing, um, for those who have never been involved in one of those before, you're in for a treat, um, I would say that if, if there's anyone here that didn't wanna have to sit through, now would be a good time to maybe make an exit, uh...
And poofed out?
Or if you wanna sit around, you can, I mean, it's a tough one, so, I'll, I'll just talk for a push break and let everybody, I'm stressed a little bit. Started, um, again, the quasi judicial hearings are just a little, uh, it's just a little trickier in nature, not because it's difficult, it's just different than how we would normally, like, you know, be accustomed to doing things, um, but the quasi judicial hearing for tonight is a, for a special use permit application, Tall River Arms, Mr. Kurt Lieberman, and 132 Franklin Park Drive, go ahead and call that meeting to order, have it a fifteen, and, um, go into roll call, and I'll start myself, Mayor, Acting Chairman Chairman, Bonsa Flowers.
My Administrator Phil Querera?
Tom Attorney Keith Margaret Jones.
Sorry, Commissioner Terry Edgar? Commissioner Larry Richards?
Commissioner Scott Bray?
My name is Attorney Lieutenant and District, Town Attorney, we're in Hertz.
And are you with us, Commissioner Redd?
Yes, Commissioner Cat Redd.
And Commissioner Johnson has dropped off one, so he's not present.
So we still have to hold in order to proceed with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, do we have any, I didn't see it in the packet, Madam Firth, do we have any previous meeting minutes?
No, they were locked completely.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, is there any old business that we need to address prior to moving to this?
No.
Okay. Um, and new business here is to give a new case and request, a whole hearing, and make decisions for continued, and I would go ahead and turn things over to our esteemed legal counsel to give us the outline of the hearing product for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to give some remarks on the nature of the proceedings that we're about to do. Conduct this hearing of the Board of Adjustment in the quasi judicial evidentiary hearing, which is similar to a court proceeding. This means that the Board will decide what facts, shows, and evidence and testimony given during the hearing, and then use their judgment to decide how the young school development ordinance should be applied to the particular set of facts. Because with proceeding and to hear an application for a special use permit, the Board will decide whether the use or development proposed in the application meets the requirements that force in the YDO. Whether it is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as maintaining the support, promotion, public health, safety, and general welfare, Q, whether it complies with all required regulations with standards of the YDO and with all other applicable regulations, three, whether it is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as not to substantially injure the value of the joint or allied property, or is a public necessity, and four, whether it will be in harmony with the area and issue to be located and conforms to the general plans for land use and development of the town and environment. Tonight, the Board may decide whether to approve the use for development as a collective, or to approve the use for development with traditional conditions agreed to by the applicant in the Board, or to deny the application. The quasi judicial role is different from when the Board acts in a legislative capacity, which is when the Board decides what the law should be, and can take constituent opinions and other knowledge into account when making the decision, often when making a legislative decision before or encourage general public comment. When acting in a quasi judicial role, the Board is determined to the evidence presented during the hearing, or in the package distributed to the Board in the party before the hearing, which forms the record. The Board must make its decision based on the competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. The decision tonight will be made by a majority vote, vote of the Board.
Oh, I can thank you for that. Um, now's the time of the chair, or this or her, does it need, will swear in all persons wishing to present testimony, so I will state that anyone that is in attendance, that is here in support of, or potentially not in support of, now would be the time to be sworn in, because if you're not sworn in, you cannot, um, give a testimony, so, if you want to testify, come on in and be sworn in.
Redd, actually, Burke over there.
Uh, Kenny, we have a question. Um, property owners come off the street from the property and consider it's not even across the street from the property, it's the property, that property, and then across the street. Um, so if there's a potential that the use will have a detrimental impact on their property if they're located in an area, then they're considered... Home and property complexes, those, that should, I just want to show before, I'm having your face, hey, Chris. All right. Okay, I'm going to leave you first, and then I'll grab you, you'll put your left hand on the bottle and raise your right. If you follow my words, if you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that would be done. All right, right hand on the bottle, and raise your right. If you follow my words, if you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that would be done. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, everybody. Um, now would be the time for me to point my destiny, to get preliminary status, try to case and identifying the property involved and the issue for the... I think that would be...
So, uh, this hearing is for, in the indoor gun range, because there was also the subject of the check amendment that was just last month, I, I saw the applicant in Maine, um, he is preventing to use his existing business, however, on, from a current, they can invade force, he decides in the industrial park that is indicated in your packet, um, the main focus of this business would be as a gun store and your gun range, but the oldest guy training up is going to be the lawn maintenance personnel and firearms, because it's for general, um, they thought the search only came to the exterior of the building other than the stationing and general maintenance, therefore, the middle of site hands are not required for the application. They will be upgrading the interior of the building and noise emitting from the space will require a type of noise warning, and they will also be hiring, um, range security officers to assist with the situation.
Okay, thank you for that. Now's the time for the conflict of interest and bias, and I'll just read it once, and then we'll go around, um, and end up with Commissioner Redd. Um, Board members shall not participate in a vote when a member has an impermissible conflict of interest, and from impermissible conflicts include, but are not limited to, one, a fixed opinion prior to hearing of the matter that is not susceptible to change, two, undisclosed export data communications, three, for a physical interest in the outcome of the matter, four, a close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or entity. And we should have, do you have any of those?
No, John Bray.
Mr. Redd, do you have any conflicts?
No, I do not have any conflicts.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, item number ten, uh, the applicant will present evidence in support of his or application. Uh, evidence includes testimony, application, mass, et cetera. Uh, Emily, I don't know, would this be the time where we introduce this as evidence R O A, or how, how, how do you want to do this, or is, they bother having to do this on, but this is evidence for the hearing, so?
Yes, it is, um, and so, uh, can we clear this as the finding and zoning administrator, or you could simply, um, access, you enter into the record?
Does that need to be done by a vote?
Uh, no, it does not.
Okay, all right, because we've done it that way in the past, I just want to make sure.
We're streamlining.
You can, you can do it by a vote.
I would prefer to say we're going to end this, end this, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, this is going to be committed evidence, all right, good deal, I don't know what you want to call it, so I can jot it on in my notes.
Tell me your last name and number one on it.
Okay. Lieberman, number one, all right, um, okay, so, Mr. Lieberman, I will give the floor to you, I would just like to, to remind everybody, you know, for all witnesses, members of the Board and other sworn witnesses, we'll be able to cross-examine, uh, the witness, each questioner can ask their question, can we done, cannot ask other questions of the witness unless based on new evidence or questions asked since that person had an opportunity to ask, so, um, having said that, Mr. Lieberman, I will give you the floor, um, and go from there.
Well, I'm more than, everybody, I appreciate your attention, uh, my name is...
Sir, if you don't mind just standing in this round of vicinity, I think it'll be better for the microphone.
So I have, thank you, everybody, for coming, those on the line. My name is Kirk Lieberman, I'm the owner of Tall River Arms and Wake Forest, and happy to be five years. Um, so what we're trying to do here is, this is a savings plan, um, we want to open up what is, uh, we're going to call it Gun Bill Gun Club and Range, over there on 132 Franklin Park Drive, and the idea is to take that facility, the burnout today, keep the exterior the same, so there's no changes other than, you know, paint in the, in the apartment as well, as, as well, and then we're going to turn that into a state of art facility from the other side. That building is twenty thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet, that would be a twenty lane indoor range facility, um, we'll be using, we'll call Action Marketing, they have a company, they do, they have probably about five certain ranges, I'm hoping on that, just kind of, I don't know, that number out there, probably shouldn't do that, so , but anyway, they go range all over the country. They're going to be, they provide equipment, it's designed for the facilities that you're building it, and they guarantee you a hundred percent, um, guarantee that no bullet will leave that range facility. Um, the sound's in there, we'll use a state of art, uh, facility, sound, equipment, equipment, that will cover the walls, so basically the building infrastructure inside that building, there's, uh, concrete filled, similar on walls, that will have sound abating squares, as well as sound abatement and bullets, reflection, uh, steel plates across that infrastructure. There'll be two fifteen foot, uh, eighteen units just for that facility, so that the air, actually inside that range, will be probably cleared in the air, that's outside that people are on homes, um, it'll, so, value the length, the range parts, there'll be five thousand square feet of retail space, we plan to cover essentially anything and everything that you need for a minute work and play in the outdoors, all right, that, that's our goal, is to find out, when there's a big gap in this area, the closest thing they have to is a ballpark, in, in reality. Um, there are other ranges in the area, so it's one of the reasons I came out this way, sort of spread ourselves out a little bit from the competition, which is often what we're in times two. There are also the confrontants, uh, there'll be rental confrontants, there'll be four of them, that is, although about a hundred forty-five people, it'll be separateable by, you know, partitioned walls, those will be rental, like anybody, right, there'll be trainers, they're going to be outsourced, there'll be training, you know, classes, safety classes, certification classes, law boards that will be able to do some, or even, everybody else that needs them as well, that boy club, sub staff, or whatever, the tactics, gun, shooting, firearm related, um, there'll be gun service as well, we're thinking about, we're going to have about five gun kids, we're going to outsource them in and bring them in from the community, so they'll rent the space like a farmer's shop, if that makes sense, so they'll rent the space, they'll be able to service their clients, they'll be part of that marketing agency to do that. There'll be a VIP space, so we're going to have a VIP room, that will have, there, if you want to hang out, it'll be a membership base, have showering and washers. For some folks, they don't want to bring their guns home, if they want to shoot, they got to keep them in the safer area, if they're not around their kids, we're going to buy that kind of opportunity for folks to come in, watch, shoot, hang out, do whatever work, take showers, the back, work, whatever that, um, we're planning to hire, uh, around twenty-seven people, uh, some of them will be, you know, permanent employees, some of them will be outsourced, some of them will be part time, so it's a good opportunity, I think, for a lot of folks in the area, uh, to rent, uh, you know, the farm, all right, um, and so there'll be that, and, uh, you know, I think with that, you know, I think we'll do a long area of the two time questions we have, so, you know, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, and do we have any, uh, other witnesses in support of the application? Uh, so you may, uh, speak now, I know, uh, Mr. Houseard already spoke at one point, but Jerry, did you want to add to that, or, um, well, actually, can't, because he just wanted, sorry, I just realized that after the fact, my bad. All right, um, and that, that's a pair of folks up this morning, correct? Madam Firth? It's four of them, okay. Uh, I think the zoning administrator doesn't need presenting any fat files or evidence, uh, I feel like that is already in here, is that correct, Miss Flinger?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's still under, um, Lieberman is number one, um, so now we get to the point in the meeting where persons, uh, opposed to granting the application will present their evidence against the application, uh, and evidence obviously includes testimony, contracts, mass, et cetera.
Real quick, before I start, uh, I have multiple questions, so, if I ask one at a time, you have a chance to vote, or hear all the questions, I want to make sure before I start.
Right, um, so, if there are questions, and, really, these are the names, we can go ahead and say, yeah.
I think we should ask from a procedural standpoint, can we ask all of them at once, or can we just ask one, get the answer, ask the second, get the answer?
Oh, uh, you should get the answer, but you can do another question, but that is clear, with what, how they match up.
So, unlike a public commentary where he's kind of talking, and the board just absorbing, this is like a courtroom, potentially, where... this, it'd be like a courtroom, potentially, where you're prodded in, and, and goes with the question and answer.
So, my name is Kirk, I live in 49th Park Avenue, uh, kind of diagonal, there is one building between, uh, my house, and, uh, you know, I've lived there now for eight years, uh, got two kids, so obviously, it's just a different little bit of concern, there's a gun range kind of going around, off the street from my house. Uh, I also own some of the apartments right next to my house, again, you know, quarter population live there, and most of the time, you know, you know, type of particularities might, and it's on there, but I have some more questions to ask. One of the first questions I have is, what caliber of gun is going to be allowed within the building? It's about a seven, determine, the noise level, you know, should be fifty caliber, it's in the lot, I don't know, but, that's Kirk's question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, they're going to let the election rate, if we get the doubt, we won't be allowed to get the doubt, and then, my, my, you've got to tell me right now, that I've not been stopped, really, maybe in the largest caliber, or a mark ten, et cetera, that would be allowed to be shot in that range, but it is rated fifty caliber. Okay. Uh, how often, I mean, you've talked about the safety barriers, that you're now a professional company, come in and, uh, put it in place, how often will we set the barrier to check to confirm that they're still, suitable to test? Uh, we define a check on that, because we'll be in there every single day, um, you know, looking, so, it's, like I said, it's great, I've checked the count, there, there, there are no instances that we know of that could cause a tolerance, penetrate that, that, that wall structure that's built inside, um, but, uh, gross, you have more definitions, just we'll be doing daily checks to make sure that everything, you know, concrete walls are not, you know, chipping apart, um, you know, those concrete block walls, like some built concretes that are not hollow in any way, um, and then the steel plate above, or at least, you know, there are no, I think, it was only decalated, go through, there's no legal to go above as well. So, there'll be daily checks that happen when we leave the facility, um, there is a operation, we have a fifteen that comes in, does the screens and things like that, and they're also checking if that's on, and then, you know, they'll probably, you know, real deep count checks, if that, okay? And I know you said that they guarantee 100 percent, um, that, you know, no bullet will protrude, uh, there's a few years, there's a gun range in Lively, I think, that actually had bullets that protruded out of it, and actually hit the cars, been parked a lot of them, probably without committing a hit. Um, so, my question is, one, how, that's, that's my first question, how are you going to, what are you going to do differently to prevent that? So, I don't know the daylight structure, I remember the building, I know a while ago, um, it's essentially been two buildings, sometimes two buildings, right? So, it is designed by Action Market and the construction companies that are either, you know, sure that that doesn't happen, both the size, the pack, product, right? And then we'll also have R S Os that are going to be in the range with each person shooting, watching, and making sure that they're doing the things that they're supposed to be doing, but at the same time, the participant who comes in will have to also take a quick training class before they go, so they don't get, uh, on the ground, if they're not, you know, they're not fired, but they have to count them. There'll be, uh, multi-attaches going on there, there's going to be R S Os, um, that are there monitoring, the folks can go turn off the video, give our equipment, you know, where we're watching that, and another, that's a band as well. Um, daylight is not going to be, it's not going to be a same facility, right? That's, daylight was built over some years ago, the equipment and the manufacturing that we're going with, they have adapted and changed to, you know, several generations beyond that. Kind of thinking back off that, like I said, I bet you said 100 percent, and God, there is, they told us words could get happened, who is going to be liable for that? So, I was, I, I think it won't work to give assets, somebody, do something within the community, and that's what I'm saying, who would be liable for that? Now, the legal question, I don't really agree for that, the idea is they never get that, right? Um, we have our present guarantee on that, from the, the, from Action Market and, and construction, and, and, probably that's the follow-up on that, if I'm, you know, assuming, you know, excuse me, not being aware of, too late. What would be hours of operation? Uh, right now, I don't know if you're interested, you say to me. What's the right, what's the gun range, because it's going to have parallel with Park Avenue, or is it going to be like, or, sort of, sort of, set up, especially parallel with Park Avenue, or parallel with the, uh? All right, and what will your policy be on competition, if you bring their weapons, since those are the usual, like, to prevent active, this, 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 uh, so, if we have that whole, whole store today, so, if they've got to come in, and obviously, with a little bit of, they're, they're, they're just having to go back, they're not going to be able to just walk in, quit, so we're going to have a desk right at the front doors, where folks walk in, and they're going to be monitoring that, so if somebody tries to come in with, you know, a pistol on their hand, or a rifle on their hand, they're going to immediately stop, where do they take the guns from them, you know, make sure that there's no ground in there, and ask them to get back, for example. There won't be people walking around, or should not be walking around, the park lots are in the, in the store itself, with guns, and, 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 uh, then my last question is, have you had a special look at how this will affect the property values surrounding the gun? Professional, in the real nature, or? No, I have, the idea is that we have, you know, good strategy, right? Because, you know, we're bringing in, right, not overloading the fact, you know, we're bringing in people to the area, to see the area, that is, that's, that is, but I, I don't see it being so that, you know, to increase the, uh, et cetera, anything like that. The value of my building is in terms of particularly the less inside, it's actually less than, you know, what I'm actually going to be paying for this whole thing, right? So, I'm putting in an X, and it's a startup, or a, the evaluation of what the business is, is actually a lot less than I'm paying for it. Mark, what's all I got?
Hold on, thank you for that. Um, do we have any other person opposed to granting that would like to present any evidence and ask any questions?
Proposed, so strong.
So, what now?
Proposed, sounds so strong.
Well, it's just, you know, it's, it's the way that it's written, so.
I'm not against growth and development or anything like that, there's always a butt, there's another butt behind that, usually, anything before butt, be it, um, butt, having said that, uh, for those concerned about the, the, uh, it's a place we need to put opportunities to this property, and that's where his kids are, and so, to follow up for understanding that, and I know that there's other council members that, you know, would probably be concerned as well, if you had a, a live gun, or you could put opportunities to where you sleep and where your kids play. Uh, so, and we do have six, we do have roughly 700 tenants that live across the street from where this place is, and one of my responsibilities is property owners, and not really cliche, I, I do genuinely care about the people that live in property that we own, and, and so, hearing some of the questions Mason had, and gave some response, and, and I appreciate your understanding and transparency. Um, I really don't have many questions, um, you know, I'm a professional, I'm a contractor, so, what are the, you, you just mentioned about the, for the law, making no tower, uh, what was the thing to that, uh, P D Wolf, probably not putting this down, it's a building? Uh, whatever, the city wants to have it in, and then they fill up the property, they have standard city blocks, which we ordered, and then fill up the property, I'm not sure what kind of, like, the fire, I haven't been, been, uh, I'm not reaching here, it's not agents, agents to start, that's a typical, ten, you block, and you can't get the toilet, and that would add additional reinforcement or something like that. Um, and if this feels valid, it's for our, uh, we know that to be true, I'm not sure if, you know, stuff like that. Um, is there, I, I kind of gathered this information over the weekend, I wasn't really under the business, that we had a quasi-dishairring, but I'm personally not prepared. Um, is there any way we can table this until next month, so that I can get some expert testimonial, uh, potential appraisal values, maybe get a little sound engineer, uh, having brought my attention that noise coming from these institutions could potentially have negative impact on the surrounding property value. Uh, I know that in Wake Forest, we can hear, when I was working at the electric motor shop, at Wake Forest P D, um, gun range, that, 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 okay?
So, one of the things that we're doing, right, and this is, so Action Market, this a few times, they build ranges beside pawn shops, what they do is in that C N U mall, they put space in the outside wall, and the actual wall of the range, that space allows, that's out of it, and you don't need to, right, to put, what we're being told in, obviously in new ranges, I think you've got to try, try to use an action market as well, but you've got, you're outside that building, you've got to, you're up to the wall, and you're not going to hear gun shop outside. The whole idea is to keep it inside, keep it safe inside, and keep the noise inside. Um, go here, obviously, if you're in the retail location, in that building, the idea is what you do outside that building, is to not hear that sound. We're, we're conscious of the, the, all people around us, right, there's a building, and there's the visitors, and there, there's that neighborhood, that's what we do, that's what it is, I, I look around, make sure, you know, my profile in the area, when I look around, so, you guys will not hear that, in that, that, that part of the conversation, will not hear that, maybe.
Well, and I would say in addition to that, I mean, obviously, the town has its own, uh, noise and nuisance ordinances, that would, you know, uh, be in play with this as well, so.
So, if it were with gun issues, then, then, that then potentially limits the hours of use, but someone will be asked to, uh, fix up, so, that, I mean, that's, I, yeah, right?
Yeah, we don't, uh, we want to jump out of this town and have a positive experience to everybody around us, not just, you know, not just where else you live, so, absolutely, the town is important to me, I, I'd be like I say, we're, if I'm not allowed here, I'm going to put it in the spread, that's just the upper end of, which, because I want, now, I want to make sure that it's contained, that's not that building, and get positive experience if you're going to, if I'm a manager.
And it's just kind of very odd, and, and what happened, uh, the, the White Forest was getting, uh, was it, um, not let that carry fire, or, or go take the flood in there, young, was that, or why did they go in White Forest?
Uh, they responded to the building, there's a few different, you're not recording the building, or is it taking a piece of that? Yeah, I did a lot of research, it's, it's a kind of year and a half thing going on. Um, I actually, my gun building location better, like, the one that I messaged, a little bit of trouble with my competition in that respect, um, because all points just opened up, off Spring Forest, because we had a criminal, you know, the, the, you know, the goal is to make sure I have enough space in there, the idea is all those who, uh, you know, combined to, uh, Tardor Arms and, uh, Millville, or Tardor Arms, and do that open there, um, so, if that, if they spent, I thought, there, they don't have no building, they tell them memberships, or, you know, it's, you know, not really, that's my top, that's my, my top goodness, or, that's from tell memberships, or, you know, who's the two of them, you know?
All right, um, now's the time for the parties that permit to present the bubble to opposing testimony, I feel like we've already kind of worked through that piece of it, unless you feel like there's something that hasn't been satisfied, that you'd like to address, uh, we've chosen to take the time to do that, um, but if not, um, you know, before closing the hearing, uh, the chairperson isn't, is or, is definitely summarize the evidence that's been presented, giving the parties opportunity to make corrections or objections, again, I feel like we've just done that, uh, we certainly have our evidence here, uh, everything that Mr. Lieberman said was already in here, was there any conditions that, that we heard in testimony time that would be different to what is in here? All right. Any, uh, questions, comments, concerns from any of the commissioners before we close the hearing? Okay, um, we do have to close it on a motion in a second, so I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Second. Hold on, um, so we've got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing not, all in favor? Aye.
Commissioner Redd, aye.
All right, um, the hearing is now closed, uh, now's the time where we deliberate the case, uh, all deliberations are open to the public, in addition, testimony is not taken during deliberations, however, the board may discuss the postconditions, uh, with the applicant. So, I'll ask the commissioners again, if you have, uh, any kind of questions, comments, concerns, uh, anything like that. Any conditions that the board feels we need to add to this, um, now's the time to kind of throw it out in the open and, and discuss it, so.
I believe the presentation is through, sir.
I agree. All right, well, I guess it's time to make a decision, so, Mr. Dave Barber, I'll turn it over to you to ask.
Yes, um, so, in order to make a decision, um, on the special heat permit application, the board must make a finding of fact in regard to each part of the standard importance that I had earlier, um, and so, I'll just read out the first standard that the board sees considered and vote on, uh, part one, whether the use or development as proposed is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. And so, um, if the board would, I would vote on this condition, whether, yes, um, true or no, false, um, I guess, you know, eyes would be, I could believe it.
Yeah, so basically, it's, it's either a yes or no, or true, false, so, um, with the, the question at hand, use of, for developments located, designed, proposed to be operated so as to maintain, promote, the public health, safety, and general welfare, is used, that's true. Yes. Commissioner Redd?
I'm coming, yes, yes, I agree.
Okay.
It sounds like we have a majority vote of the board on part one, um, and so we will proceed to the next finding, uh, the commissioner says vote on whether, uh, the use for development complies with all required regulations and standards of the industrial development ordinance, and with all other applicable regulations.
Yes, true. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Redd?
Yes.
It sounds like we have a majority vote of the board on, um, the second finding, so that's a yes. We can proceed to the third finding, uh, whether the use for development is locally designed and proposed to be operated so as to not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity.
Yes, true.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Redd, yes, yes.
We have a majority of votes for the third finding, um, and we'll proceed to the fourth, uh, which is whether the use for development will be in common with the area in which it is to be located and supports the general plans for land use and development of this town and its desire.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Redd, yes, yes.
Um, and so, the board has, uh, made all of the required findings of fact, no additional conditions have been proposed, um, to vote on, and so, um, accordingly, uh, this special heat permit is granted.
Okay. Do we need, will we make a motion to close that, or are you going to do it? I've never had it as a, I'm, this is the first, so you guys are witnesses in history, okay? Seriously, small town level history, this is the first time ever, there's been a quasi-traditional hearing in a regularly scheduled town hall meeting, so, pardon our moving parts.
So, now that the permit is approved, I believe the next action would be to return if anyone?
To adjourn the quasi-dishairring, or there is a closed session on the board to adjourn that?
Uh, right, yes, sorry, not the, the general meeting that, that, that you're, so.
The quasi-dishairring.
You're asking, yeah, we close? Because we closed again.
Oh, right, yes, yes, sir.
So, what's, yeah. Whew, that's a lot I'm telling you, that's a lot of moving parts, um, so the next item on the agenda is closed session, uh, under item A, Wisconsin statute, preservation